We've already done item 10C. Item 10D is to conduct an appeal hearing related to award of bid for purchase of mobile and portable radios. What I'd like to do first is ask staff for an overview, then we'll ask the appellant to plead his case for no more than 10 minutes, and then we'll have staff follow-up. Mr. O'Leary and chief.
The subject of this appeal hearing is related to action of the city in reviewing bids that will lead to award of the contract for our mobile and portable radio bid. The city's municipal code provides that bids may, shall be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. In practice, two related but separate terms are considered, both questions of being responsible and being responsive. For the mobile and portable radio bid, Williams USA was the lowest dollar bidder. I understand the analysis of this bid found no issue with Williams USA as a responsible bidder. There is no known reason that the firm is incapable of providing the radios bid at the prices, at the price quoted. However, the Finance Department determined, with the technical assistance of the Fire Department, that Williams USA bid was not responsive to the bid specifications. In fact, the Department determined that Williams USA bid failed to conform to several specification requirements. Williams USA then requested an administrative hearing by the city manager on this determination of nonresponsiveness. The designated hearing officer for the city manager affirmed the findings of the Finance Department that the Williams USA bid was non-responsive to the bid specifications. Williams USA then requested this hearing before the City Council. In order for a bidder to be eligible for award of a bid, the bid must be responsive. And if you have any question, the city attorney would be glad to answer any question on this matter, but I would say that a responsive bid is one that meets all of the established terms, conditions, and specifications of the bid, and agency has limited discriminate, I'm sorry, that the agency has limited discretion and may only waive minor irregularities from the bid specifications. The specifications for more, for mobile and portable radios were developed in conjunction with the Millbrae, Central County, San Mateo, and the San Bruno Fire Departments. The specifications, at least in part, were prescribed by the requirements of a grant application submitted by the city to the Federal Emergency Management Agency on behalf of all four agencies. The bid by Williams USA materially deviated from the following specification requirements: that the radios be P-25 compliant, that they have the capability and capacity for 512 channels and 50 zones, they have the capability for users to directly select each of the top five channels, and that voice annunciation capability be included in, in the equipment. An agency, or in this case, the four agencies, developed specifications to meet their operational and safety needs. It is impossible for every firm and every product on the market to meet these bid specifications. Specifications, by definition, narrow the possible products to those meeting the operational and safety needs of the agencies. Beyond just answering the question tonight, if USA, if Williams USA is responsive to the specifications, the City Council should well have an interest in if the specifications unintentionally allowed only one firm to bid, a sole source, or if the specifications unreasonably or arbitrarily narrowed the possible responses. I believe the facts show that the bid specifications do not create a sole source and are not unreasonable or arbitrarily narrow. I am unclear exactly the basis for the USA, what Williams USA appeal. In the record, Williams USA stated that its bid exceeds your specifications in every way, and in a later email further protest that the radios are completely compliant to, to the city's specifications. Yet within the 62-page written appeal appear statements acknowledging that the bid does not meet the specifications. I can say this appeal hearing is not about the city's financial, financial condition or the revenue expenditure imbalance the City Council has dealt with over the last several years. In fact, the City Council has been extremely diligent in acknowledging taxpayer costs and the costs that, that this city is exposed to over a long period of time. In fact, 12 of the 120 radios in this bid, 12 of them go to the city of San Bruno, and 80 percent of the cost for these radios is paid through the FEMA grant. The worst financial impact to all the cities would be if the city took action that makes us ineligible for the FEMA grant.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for the overview. Is the appellant here? Would you like to come up and speak? This is a relatively complicated matter. Normally, you get three to five minutes, but I'll give you no more than 10. So you're on.
How about 15?
How about 10? Thank you.
Okay, then I'm assuming that, oh, good evening to everyone. I'm assuming that you've all received my packet, okay? So I'm going to respond to Mr. O'Leary's letter. A couple of inconsistencies in there that I really don't care to bring up right now, but the bottom line is, is that, you know, when this bid was let, I was, and the bids we responded to, I was never given an opportunity to meet with anybody in the city, the Police Department, or anyone else, with my numerous emails and voicemails that I wanted to come by and discuss the opportunities that the ICOM radio equipment would do and how it complies with the bid specifications. That never happened, no matter how many times I asked everybody. Number one, in Mr. O'Leary's noncompliance, he says, "Were P-25 noncompliant?" That is not true, and in fact, actually, the Kenwood radio is not noncompliant. In attachment A, right here, which you have in your packet, I emailed Mr. Tellys and asked him, "Does the radio need to be full P-25 compliant or just merely capable?" And he said, "Capable." It would be used later on. Now, the difference is, is that ICOM makes a radio that is P-25 upgradable, it's compliant, but it's upgradable later on. So why spend $1,000 now on a radio that you don't have, have to do? P-25 is something you'll never do. It's not mandated by the city, the county, the state, or the federal government, only for federal agencies. If you went P-25, everybody around you would have to go P-25, and you're talking millions and millions and millions of dollars. So that's, it's a, ICOM came up with a radio to allow people to buy a, a upgradable radio to make them feel better that they could buy it later on. Save yourself $1,000 a radio. That's why we're $109,000 low on the bid, on the basic bid. So we believe that we're compliant because of the email from Mr. Tellys advising us that it was a P-25 capable radio. We bid a P-25 capable radio. The cost savings to the city again is $109,512 on the bid. That's the difference in the bid price between the supposed compliant people and us. You also stated 50 zones and 512 channels. Well, that's another kind of a, something that people put in bid specs that, because they get it off the back of a radio brochure. 512 channels, you don't need 512 channels. I've been in the radio business 37 years in public safety, in the Bay Area with Motorola, with many different agencies. Seminole County Fire Services published document. You have 43 channels in the whole Bay Area on fire channels. State of California Fire Scope, CalFire, 83 channels. They mean the total of 126 channels. The radios we bid are 256 channels. You got 130 left over. What are you going to do with them? They're not even out there. So the 512 channels, they're really a, kind of a nonexistent type of bid specification. You don't need it. Why are you asking for it? Well, because it was on the back of the brochure, of the Kenwood brochure, so that's what we put in there. We feel that that's a, not a good specification to put in there, and it brings you into a radio and makes you more of a sole source type radio when it's something you don't need. Again, you're paying $109,000 more for something you'll never use. P-25 again. The P-25, people are buying the P-25 radios that they don't need to buy because they're not mandated by, like I said, the city, county, or the state. And also, there was a, a University of Pennsylvania survey that just came out about P-25 interoperability and the security. Oh, it's already been compromised. So it's basically worthless right now. Number two is, or number three on Mr. O'Leary's, "We're not compliant" list is the five-channel direct entry. The five-channel direct entry is a proprietary spec to Kenwood. Nobody else does it. We, however, and ICOM can do that versus, using the channel select knob in a bank to accomplish pretty much the same thing. However, getting back to your bid specs, here's the Kenwood control head. It's got nine buttons on it. It's going to take five buttons for you to do this five-channel operation select, which means you don't have enough buttons to do a bid spec. And here it said you had to have CalFire interoperability. That means a command bank. You have no button for that. By the time you add that, by the time you add the multiple PL select for CalFire to select the mountaintop sites, the scan and delete functions, and the emergency button that were mandatory in the bid spec, you don't have enough buttons left over. So it's, it's worthless. It was put in the bid spec to make it proprietary. Next thing is, is that the, there's a voice annunciation capable on the portable. It wasn't a, a mandatory bid spec. It was an option, state so in the option list. And voice annunciation, in my opinion, is just one of those Gucci kind of things that really nobody cares about. And in the Fire Department, it's probably more detrimental than anything else. When you change the channel knob, it says, "Channel 1, Bank 1." Why do I need to know that? I, I've been a fireman for 20 years. I know what channel 1 and channel 2 is. When they're on a scene in a fire, and there's a lot of hectic going on, and he's changing channels, and it's going to keep saying, "Channel 1, Channel 5, Channel 6, Channel 7." That's something you don't need. It's, again, a proprietary feature of Kenwood and not worth $109,000. Also on the bid were options for FM-approved non-incentive and intrinsically safe. Let's take FM-approved non-incentive. FM-approved non-incentive is a federal classification that guarantees that the radio, when you push to talk, to talk on it, doesn't produce a spark. In gaseous atmospheres, methane, propanes, acetylene, dust filings, any kind of gasoline, things like that, which the Fire Department handles a lot of time, from a vehicle accident and the gasoline spill, to going into somebody's home that the water heater's leaking, that's propane all over, or gas all over the place. Reference your PG&E gas explosion. That is a standard feature on the Motorola, or on the ICOM radio. And on the Kenwood, it's a $10,500 option, which was not on the, which was not included in their primary bid. It's an option, as stated on their price list, on their bid. Those are options. Submersibility is an option, which, of course, the Fire Department would really like to have because they crawl through water and things like that during a structure fire. It makes the radio sealed against water intrusion and brings up the life, likelihood of the radio. That's another $21,500 on the Kenwood. And every two years, you got to spend another $20,160 to get it recertified. Wow. Okay, so now we're up to, uh, let's see here, $163,000 more to get two options that ICOM has standard. It's a no-brainer now. Additionally, when you run with the FM-approved option on the Kenwood, you have to go down to a lower battery. On the bid spec, it said 3,300 milliamp hour. You have to go down to a 2,500 milliamp hour battery, and you lose about three hours worth of battery talk time. That's critical, critical in a fire operation. You don't have time to change batteries. The ICOM is a 14 and a half hour battery. This battery is an eight-hour battery. I've also, with my bid specs, when I submitted my bid, I had all these things highlighted on an Excel spreadsheet for everybody's review, which apparently was escaped. So in conclusion, I would like to say that Williams USA is the lowest responsible bidder. And we're going to save you $153,000, $163,000 and give you a radio that is far superior to the one that was proposed on the specifications. We've got them used all over Northern California. I've got them in the state government. I've got over 200 of them used in Sonoma County in fire departments alone. It's a quality, high-quality radio. It far surpasses the Kenwood radio that was specced out here, and we request that we get the bid. And if, if you need time to consider this, maybe we could call a special meeting, and we can talk about it further. I don't see anybody in the city that's got 37 years worth of experience in evaluating radio communications, that may have used them for 37 years, that may have talked on them, but they're not degreed, they're not accredited, and really, it's like having a, maybe a city sanitation worker doing brain surgery at Stanford University. How can you evaluate the patient when you know nothing about it? How can you evaluate the radio communications inside and what they do and ignore all of these blarium things and, and spend $163,000 more for something that's not going to be the same? Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions of the appellant? Michael?
Mr. Williams, I'm wondering, Mr. O'Leary stated that in your initial bid, or perhaps your, the initial bid that you submitted did not meet some of those specifications. Did you at any point change the, the model or any of the specifications that you were proposing?
No, I did not.
So your initial bid did, in your, in your opinion, meet all of the specifications?
Absolutely. And the three items that I brought up, which were in his, in his letter response to me that I was noncompliant on, was P-25, when in fact we are, because we were told we could bid a capable radio, which we did. The 512 channels, you got, you don't have 512 channels, what do you need it for? I'm giving you a radio that's, you're going to have 130 left over. There's not that many channels in the United States that you're going to get. So that's ridiculous. The voice annunciation, that was an option, which you're going to pay for. It wasn't a spec. And it's, like I said, detrimental to the, I think, the public safety people. I would never have that. And the other one was the five buttons. If you utilize all those five buttons, you're going to take buttons away from things that you actually need, like your MDC signaling, acknowledgement, your CalFire command bank, which you're supposed to have, or you can't go to a CalFire fire and get money, and your multiple PL select for site selects for CalFire repeaters, and a few other items. Emergency button, which was required in the bid specs. If you take all those, if you put all those features you need in, you don't have five buttons left over to meet that spec. So if you take the five buttons, you're noncompliant on the other ones. If you put the other ones, then you're noncompliant on the five.
Okay. And I did see in, in the packet that we received that there were some emails that you had submitted asking for some clarification on some of the specs. Did you feel that any of the requirements were either unclear or somehow put you at a disadvantage in, in the bidding process?
The, the five channel was, that's a proprietary specification to, to Kenwood, and so is the voice annunciation. So that makes the bid proprietary right there with those two features. The voice annunciation was an option, not a requirement. The 512 channels, I'm attributing, you know, if you look at the bid specs, they're pretty atrocious. For anybody that went out and put together a bid, there's no transmitter receiver specifications. There's nothing that tells you what the quality of the radio. All you're asking for is a, is a 50-watt radio, it's a mobile, it has 512 channels, and it does this, this, and this. There was no transmitter receiver spec, which are always in bid specifications, always. That tells you what's inside the radio and how quality it is. Anybody can make a mill-spec radio, but can they all do .25, 2.5 microvolt sensitivity? No. .35 maybe. So the inside of the radio is what tells you what the quality is, and then, of course, you got the options and things like that. So I attributed the 512 channels because that, if you look at that bid, the way that that bid was laid out, it's exactly, it's just a copy off the back of a Kenwood brochure. That's the bid spec. Usually, a bid spec's about five pages for these kind of radios. So these are right off the back of the Kenwood brochure. So I attributed the lack of experience to the 512 channels. People don't know that they don't need 512 channels, or maybe they've never thought about it. Think about it. I've got it all right here for you. There's your channel plan. That's for the whole, that's for the whole technical county, or the San, San Bruno and the San Mateo County, 43 channels. State of California Fire Scope, 83 channels. That's, that's 126 channels. Why do you need 512? Why won't a radio that's 256 channels work? Give you 130 left over.
Okay. Anything else? Any questions? Mr. O'Leary?
The only comment in writing that I took personal offense to was when Mr. Williams said that an accountant wasn't qualified to do brain surgery. And I, I dispute that.
Sanitation worker.
Sanitation worker.
Do you, real quick, when, you made a comment that you wanted to meet with city people, quote, and you were unable to.
Yes, I made several calls to Mr. Tellys.
Could you be specific to who you did not talk to or meet with? I know you said meet, but I want to understand and assure, understand that you're saying you did not have, you had communication.
Yes.
Okay. Verbally as well as written?
Yes.
Okay. But you wanted to have a specific meeting, and that's what you're saying wasn't?
Yes, I, I left several voicemails from Mr. Tellys and several emails over the course of the three months because he had the, you had the gas explosion, and so everybody was quite hectic. And I did manage to talk to him once for about three minutes, and then a fire call, and he goes, "Yeah, yeah, we need to talk and sit down and find out why you're, why you bid what you bid and what it's all about." And then a fire call came in, and he was gone. He goes, "I'll call you back," and that was the last I ever heard from him. And I left several more calls after that. I talked to Mr. O'Leary when he was doing the review, and I said, "Let's get together. Let me show you how my radio is compliant with these specifications and the intent." But that never happened either. So nobody ever took me up on my offer, which is really kind of strange that nobody wanted to talk about the radios.
And I want to be clear too, because I know that you were asking for some special meetings when it came to this, of course, under our municipal code, this is the form in which we have this type of appeal. The other thing is you sent to four members of the City Council asking for us to call a special meeting under municipal code, which three of us can do. Unfortunately, when you do that, we can't respond and coordinate that because that's in violation of the Brown Act. So that's why, and I just want that clear because I don't want you to assume, because I talked to our city attorney to get clarification and do that, because I know you wanted the mayor to call it, and that didn't seem to work. So then you went to the four of us, trying to get us to call a special meeting by three of us calling that. And, and we can't coordinate our efforts like that because that is in violation of the, of the Brown Act. So I just wanted that to be understood and clear too.
Yeah, and I didn't understand, because it didn't say in the regulations or anything about that, so. But he did clear that up with me about two days later.
Just, just so you're...
But I'd like to have a special meeting now, if need be.
Mr. O'Leary, any more comments?
Just, just very quickly, Mr. Mayor.
One more thing, Jim, before, before we go. I read...
Oh, no, to the chief, I want to ask some questions.
Okay. Go ahead, Jim. Chief?
I'm sorry if anyone interrupted me. I, I'm very curious, and I didn't see it in here, so, and, but maybe I missed it. Where did the qualifications or the specifications for the radios come from? And was that a coordinated effort between the other fire agencies and districts and cities?
You're exactly right. The specifications were pulled together by all four agencies and their, their personnel in each of those.
Okay, so you all sat down and said, "This is what we want, this is what we need," or, and then are the other cities getting the same radios? So all the cities are getting the same radios?
Yes.
Or the intent is to get the same radios? Okay. And then did, I wasn't clear with Mr. O'Leary. The state had some specifications that we need to follow to get grant money? You said something about if we don't do something, we'll lose the FEMA money?
The, the city has been, been awarded a grant on behalf of the four agencies, including San Bruno, a grant from the federal, from, from FEMA.
Okay.
That will cover 80 percent of the cost of the radios for the four agencies. We were the lead agency in submitting the grant.
Okay. So I don't understand the connection between the specifications of what we need and the grant money. Are you saying they say you have to have these things, and then if you don't do them...
Can I try?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay. And just, just one, one comment on the specifications. I guess my observation is that the specifications call for very robust radios. These are not bottom of the line. I mean, they are high-quality, or they're requiring high-quality radios with a number of safety features. But as the chief indicated, these specifications were developed by the four agencies, and we needed, as far, for, for the, for the application of FEMA, that all the radios needed to be the same. So the four agencies came together. There were some agencies on some of the specifications felt very strongly that they needed to be included. And I'm not to suggest that the San Bruno Fire Department, for each one of them, felt that that was, but as a group, these were the safety and operational features that the four agencies agreed upon as meeting their, meeting their, their needs. So the notice for bidders makes reference to both the mobile and portable radios must be P-25 compliant. The specifications themselves say they, say the radios shall be P-25 compliant. The City Council, back in July, passed a resolution for the city to submit the grant on behalf of the four agencies. And I'd like to read the first two wherethes of that, of that resolution. The first one says, "Whereas the Federal Communications Commission will require all public safety agencies to switch from, from wideband to narrow-bound radios and P-25 compliance by January 1st, 2013. And whereas San Mateo County Fire Agencies are tentatively planning to be in compliance in 2011, a regional grant was submitted on behalf of the four, of the four agencies." So back in July, there was an acknowledgement that these radios were going to be P-25 compliant. The guidance for federal grant programs, when the application was submitted, the guideline reads, "All digital, all new digital voice systems must be compliant with Project 25, P-25 suite of standards." So Battalion Chief Tayus, from, from the beginning, understood that these radios needed to be P-25 compliant, and that is what he has consistently said. The models, as, as Mr. Williams indicated, the, the models of radio bid by Williams USA are P-25 upgradable. At a reported savings, his bid is, according to the written documents, are about $1,700 less per unit. Because they are upgradable, I would suggest rather than compliant. Mr. Williams again argues that the, that, that upgradable units meet the letter and intent of the specifications. I don't see how this can be when an additional $1,700 needs to be spent in order to reach, reach P-25 compliant. Mr. Williams further argued that in an email prior to, to the bid deadline from Battalion Chief Tayus, that the radios must be P-25 capable, was the word that, that the chief used, led Williams to bid their upgradable unit. I, I can only say that Chief Tayus intended to reiterate that the units must be P-25 compliant. The word he used "capable" means having the attributes required for performance. The radios bid by Williams USA do not have the attributes to be P-25 compliant and could only become so at an additional cost of about $1,700. Regarding the, the 500 channels, the higher number of channels allows for expansion of the system as well as compatibility with other, with other agencies in the county. There are two other agencies that currently operate 512-capacity radios in the county. The two other items that, that Mr. Williams referred to was the, the five-channel push button and the voice annunciation capability. These two features, again, were identified by the group of agencies as safety features that these departments felt were necessary for, for their operation. I admit I don't have the 37 years of experience in radio that Mr. Williams refers to. My understanding is that these two features are not proprietary. My understanding is that these two features are not proprietary for the Kenwood product. That it is a feature of that product, but there are other radio products in the marketplace that also feature or offer both of those, both of those capabilities. Again, I would just say the combined safety and operational requirements for the four agencies are reflected in the bid specifications. And again, the question to the council tonight and the question to the finance department when they made their determination, I believe the question before the city manager in making the, having the hearing with Mr. Williams, was a determination, is the bid responsive to the specifications? Just in closing, over in the far back of the room is Mr. Darryl Jones. Mr. Jones has had and has, in some instances, contract with agencies in San Mateo County as a consultant for communications. In the process, I asked Mr. Jones to look at the specifications and to look at the bids submitted by Williams USA. And if you have an interest, he can answer for himself. I believe he would say that in his opinion, the bid submitted by Williams USA does not meet the specifications that were part of this bid. And I'd be glad that the chief to answer any other questions you have.
Good. Any questions of the chief or Mr. O'Leary?
To the Chair, yes. Mr. O'Leary, I mean, it's, Mr. Williams makes a very compelling case. But then there is a number six in your findings in your letter. It's just as compelling because it says, a bidding party shall not dictate the requirements. What I'd like to know is that, I think you've made it clear what P-25 compliant is. It means that whatever, whatever rate, if we have a P-25 compliant radio, it will, you know, qualify when these guidelines take place, either this year or 2013. No, sir. Upgradable, I understand, that's not, and capable, I can understand that. I guess what, not knowing technically, you know, what's going on with these types of pieces of equipment, can this agency set these specs, even though there's going to be debate amongst other providers, service providers or equipment providers? Can the agency set specs and stick by them, whether or not they're viable or not? That's my question.
City Attorney. Agencies do it all the time. I mean, you do it with respect to public, every public works project you ever have. We do it with respect to all of our purchasing. You know, from, from day one, I think staff's opinion has been, Mr. Williams' argument is with the specs. And he just has a different opinion as to what we should have required. But, you know, and he's admitted that with the P-25 and with the 51250. So yes, we can set whatever specs we want. I mean, the specs could even be higher than what's set here if we wanted to.
My last comment would be to reiterate what Councilmember O'Connell said. Do, does in any way this bid with our specs affect the grant? The specs were submitted as part of the application. And I read to you the requirement that the radios be P-25 compliant. We, we have verbal confirmation from FEMA, a FEMA representative, that the radios must be P-25 compliant. We attempted here in the, in the short period, or the holiday here, to get written confirmation of that. And we were not able to get it in writing. But Joe Tayis did receive verbal confirmation that the radios must be P-25 compliant.
At the risk of that not being P-25, at the risk of awarding a contract that is P-25 capable or P-25 upgradable, we, we could stand to lose.
Well, well.
Lose the grant or have the grant in question.
I would only say, I mean, I mean, Mr. Williams makes the case that, that P-25 capable is P-25 compliant. I mean, I, I don't agree with that, you know, so I don't know what, what.
Well, I wouldn't want FEMA to disagree either.
But, but, I mean, I think, I think FEMA, the FEMA grant for these agencies anticipates that the radios will be P-25 compliant.
Thank you.
Good night.
Go to the Chair.
Michael.
I have a few questions. So getting back to the P-25, P-25, from, from what I've read and was able to understand, is a digital infrastructure for, for radio communications. Something that we don't currently have in place. And I think in the battalion chief's email, he responded that he wanted the radios to be compliant, yet out of the box, not using P-25. So clearly, it's something we're not going to use. Immediately. And from Mr. Williams' comments, it's something that would be very expensive for us to upgrade to if we decided we were going to go that route. And also indicated that perhaps that's a requirement that would only be required for federal agencies. Even though the federal grant would state that everyone needs to be compliant, they would likely not force a local agency to be on that, on that bandwidth. So, I mean, it's almost like the whole digital television thing. I mean, if you have a box, you, you get digital. If you don't have it, you don't. So clearly, if we had a digital infrastructure, we would need that. We don't have the digital infrastructure, so it sounds like we don't really need it. And so to me, the difference between compliant and compatible, or whatever the other terms were, seems.
Capable.
Capable. Thank you. It seems more like semantics, because we know we're not going to use it anyway. Again, I know that the, the grant has language in there that, that says that these things have to be included. And that's how they ended up in, in the spec. But being that we're not going to use it, from a functionality standpoint, it, it seems like we're almost splitting hairs on how these things are going to work. Out of the box, we're not going to be using it anyway. We didn't get a copy of the, of the grant requirements in our packet. So I'm wondering, and I just wanted to reiterate, I think you did say this, but the P-25 requirement is the only requirement in our specification that came from that, from the grant requirement?
The specifications, the proposed specifications at the time were included in the grant application. It's my understanding that the only one that, of the specifications that I would detail as required was my understanding of the P-25 compliant requirement.
Okay. And you did mention that there are other agencies using the 512-channel radios. But are they using the full 525 channels that are available to them, or?
I, I don't believe they're using 512. They're, I mean, again, my point only is that I think Mr. Williams said there's no one in the area that is using a radio with that capacity. And I was only pointing out that two agencies in San Mateo County alone use radios or require radios that have that capacity.
Okay. Maybe they have deeper pockets than we do.
I might just add that I don't think the, the, the difference between the 512 channels and 256 channels is a significant cost difference in, in the radios. And again, as even Mr. Williams, I think, pointed out, the real cost difference in the bid, I mean, the difference between Mr. Williams' bid and the other three bidders, or the three bids that received is really this issue of P-25 compliant and, and that variation. I mean, I, I would agree that I think that's the price difference in, in his bid.
Okay. And to address the point of, of which specifications may or may not make the different options a sole source, of all of the, the, I think there were three bids that came in, the other two met all of the specifications that, that were put out?
Actually, the second bidder, one of the, one of the requirements stipulated in the bill, in the bid, was that the bidder needed to submit sufficient literature with their bid to allow the review of responsiveness and to be sure that the bid met the city's bid specifications and requirements. The second bidder, the one immediately above Mr. Williams USA, was for a Motorola unit. And they did not submit any literature to allow us to analyze for compliance. And so from the, from the finance department's perspective, that, that bid was, would, would also be found non-responsive and, and would be passed. And the next, both of the next two bidders, both bid Kenwood equipment. So aside from the point that Mr. Williams would make about they're over, over compliant, I, I believe those two bids do meet the specifications.
Okay. And Mr. Williams also mentioned a non-sparking feature on, on the ICOM radios. That's optional, but not included in the Kenwood, in the Kenwood bid. Is that something that was, was addressed at all in the specifications that we put out? And if not, is it desirable?
I don't believe it was included in, in the specifications. And no comment of mine is to say anything negative about Mr. Williams' equipment or the ICOM equipment. You know, I'm, I'm sure it's very good equipment, and it may, it may have some features that are different and are very good and helpful and safety features. Again, the point is, it simply wasn't part of our specifications. And when, when the initial review on the part of the city manager I conducted, I didn't look at additional features. The question I was trying, trying to answer is, did, did the bid meet the specifications as we submitted?
Okay. All right. And, and just one final comment. I, you know, just, just to throw this out there, I didn't really agree with Mr. Williams' analogy. But I think you'd make a great brain surgeon. I think, I think.
Looks like it.
You can be the first. No, thanks. I, I think there might be some opportunities where we're actually leveraging the various vendors, and maybe not just a single vendor, but maybe a subset of vendors to supplement our, our knowledge and our, the depth of our knowledge into some of those products. Because yes, I don't think any of us can be experts in everything. And leveraging some of that expertise in, even upfront in developing the specs might be, might be useful.
Thank you. To the Chair. Chief, how many years have you been with one department or another? Your career?
Thirty-two years.
Thirty-two years. So you would say you have some experience in radios?
I like to push the button and talk, yeah.
Okay, good. So give me your assessment and view, because to me, what we're here for and is about is the specifications. That's what this appeal is about. I mean, I can tell you that this floor is better than that floor, but in essence, if you've specified, this is the floor you want, I'm using my analogy for me, then that's what I'm supposed to give you specs on. So to me, it's about, are the specs and specifications, have they been met for what we're asking for? What FEMA, who's up to going to pay eighty percent, or is, would be paying eighty percent for these four agencies? We know we certainly have been, been denied by FEMA before. So I want to make sure we are compliant. So in your opinion, on the specifications, can you tell me a little bit about those as far as what it meets, what it doesn't? Is this a device and apparatus that would be beneficial to the public safety?
Well, again, this, this was a collaboration between four agencies who developed these specifications. And I think, you know, in our discussions with Mr. Jones, I don't think these specifications are over the top. I think they're high-quality units that we're looking for. And I think the one thing we haven't talked about, in this county, we look interoperability. You know, so this puts four agencies with the same equipment, interchangeable if need be, and compatible. So I mean, that, that's one of the focuses of, of the entire FEMA grant. You know, Mr. Williams is not incorrect on the P-25. The, the direction on the FEMA grant was we refer to the SafeCom. And as part of that, unless we could demonstrate that P-25 was a detriment to the organizations or communications, then that would be included in the bid specification. And that's what Chief Tayis went ahead and did. So the 512, I understand, you know, we might not use all 512, but we certainly have expandable capabilities. You know, we're, we're going through, CAL FIRE is going through their changeover right now. So who knows what might happen down the road? So, you know, in Mr. Jones' experience, we do have agencies in this county with 512-channel capability also. So, you know, San Bruno wasn't a, the voice enunciation, enunciation wasn't a San Bruno. We didn't need it or want it necessarily, but other agencies did. Other agencies do use it in this county. Some of them like it regardless of Mr. Williams' personal opinion. I mean, I, so, so I think we're in line and, and this is not over the top specifications at all.
This project was obviously started and was, began prior to September 9th. And unfortunately, we had a disastrous situation that all agencies had to respond to this town and communicate. And we, we've learned some things from that night as it unfolded in this town. With that knowledge that we have today, do we still feel the specifications and the product that we have here before us is best suited not only for our agency, the four agencies, and for going forward so we can be compatible, communicate, and be most effective and efficient for our citizenry and for the public safety personnel?
I think I could best respond to that by saying that prior to his retirement, I did pose that very question to Chief Tayis when I interviewed him. And as, as you said, these specifications, the bids were actually, the due date was August 25th, so a couple of weeks before September 9th. And so the specifications were, you know, developed well before that. I did, I did ask Chief Tayis if, as a result of September 9th, if there was anything that he wished were different in the specifications. And he said no. He said that this is what the department needs.
And then, I know you, we kept alluding to Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones, can you come up to the mic? If you're willing to. I just want to have another, to me, I like getting a well-rounded base of information and experts. Mr. Jones, how many years of experience do you have?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Darryl Jones. I'm contractually responsible for design and engineering of the fire communication system throughout the county of San Mateo. And I have about thirty-two years of experience in various phases of public safety communications. I was not involved in preparation of the bid specifications that are in question. I've had a chance to briefly review them. I am thoroughly aware of the benefits and the downside of P-25. And one thing I'd like to call to your attention is that it's extremely unlikely that the fire service in San Mateo County will ever have a P-25 radio system. However, the fire service throughout the state of California, in fact, throughout the United States, depends critically on mutual aid and the ability of a firefighter, a fire engine, a fire truck, and the radios that are associated with those firefighters to go out of jurisdiction. And by having a radio that's capable of numerous channels, it's not uncommon for, on a mutual aid incident, if you remember back when our apparatus had to go to Southern California to assist with the firefighters or the wildland fires there, that depending on where you go in the state, over the next five years, I believe that we will start to see more agencies using P-25 radios. And if a San Bruno, or San Mateo, or Millbury firefighter has to respond out of the area, especially into US Forest Service jurisdiction. especially into U.S. Forest Service jurisdiction, there is a possibility that those radios will have to be programmed, once they get on scene, to operate in P-25 mode. However, I don't believe it's likely that we will be using P-25 for fire service radios here in San Mateo County, probably ever. But that is a very important distinction or consideration, that when we go out of jurisdiction, we do need to have equipment that's capable of operating in digital mode.
Thank you.
If there are any specific questions I could answer, I'll certainly do my best.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I'm interested, party, will I have the opportunity to make a comment?
Yeah, I'll let you make a comment. Go ahead, right now. Please tell us your name.
My name is John Singer. My name is John Singer, and I'm a San Mateo County resident, and I own Metro Mobile Communications, also located in San Mateo County for over 25 years. And I do have a business interest in this matter. I will say that you don't need 37 years of experience in this industry to understand the difference between a P-25 or digital radio and a non-P-25 or analog radio. So, the bid spec was very clear, it's minimal, I agree, but it says two things on the front face of the document. It says, "With narrowband capability and P-25 compliant." It's very clear to me that what you were looking to purchase was a P-25 radio, a P-25 digital radio. They're very expensive. Now, I think Mr. Williams' argument is that he has a roughly equivalent product that you can buy from him for half that money, $100,000 versus roughly $200,000. But the bid spec is written for P-25 digitally compliant radios. His radio is not digital, it is not P-25 compliant. If you want to buy an analog, non-P-25 compliant radio, there are a lot of radios in the price category of the ones that he's selling that are also very good products. I also only want to add that the City of San Bruno Fire and Central County Fire are already using a version of the Kenwood P-25 radio, and they're very happy with it, has proven to be a very exceptional product. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? I'll let you just close it up real quick.
Okay, I just wanted to respond to some of the things that Mr. O'Leary brought up. And just so everybody knows, all radios are pretty much, they all talk and listen, it's like a cellphone. There's just features different on them. So, having an ICOM radio and a Kenwood radio next to each other in the same truck, there's no difference. They all talk and listen the same way. So don't think that one's different than the other, and they can't co-mingle, they can't. Number one is, Mr. O'Leary said in his report that the no-abandon mandate of January 1st of 2013 is correct by the FCC, but he also stated that P-25 compliance isn't, and that is incorrect. There is no, and I repeat, no, and Mr. Jones, I'm sure, can answer the same question. There is no mandatory mandate, or any mandate at all, by the FCC for cities, counties, or states, only the federal government, period. Interfacing with U.S. Forest Service engines, they, one of the features of P-25 is it's dual mode. It works in conventional, like you're on now, and it works in P-25 at the same time, programmable by channel. They have your fire channels, they have CAL fire channels, they've got everybody's fire channels. When you show up, everybody in their department goes to the analog channels, not an issue. When you go on CAL FIRE, they reprogram your radio for you. Nobody else does, they do. And they wipe out all the channels that are in there, and they put their channels in. So 512 channels is a moot point. There aren't 512 channels in the state of California, as I've proved with all your channel lists from the state of California and with the Bay Area here. The reason why some people have 512 channels is because that's all Kenwood makes. They don't make a 10-channel radio or a 50-channel radio. Same with ICOM, same with Motorola. They all pick a channel amount that they think is sufficient for the industry, and that's what they make. There's no, it's 512, that's it. Or it's 256, that's it. So, just because they have 512 channels, that's because that's all they could get. They couldn't get anything less. On the five-button programming, and also the other agencies that have all these different features, and the P-25 mandate, I would challenge Mr. O'Leary to show me. Show me the specifications, show me the law, the federal grant, show me the, anything you've got that tells you that the federal government's mandating what you buy. They're not. One thing I will say, though, that he's correct on, and this is a big misnomer, the state of California has fallen for it, and a lot of public safety agencies around the country have fallen for it, and I've been bringing this up to many people, and they've realized it, and bought the radios that I'm selling, or the competitors' equivalent. That is, is that on a P-25 federal grant, depends on who you get it from, and what agency in the federal government, sometimes they make you buy a P-25 radio. You don't have any choice. If you want that money, you've got to spend $3,000 for a radio, instead of $1,100 for an analog radio that can be upgraded to it. They make you do it, even though you'll never use it, which of course is a waste of everybody's money, since there's no mandate for it. If you folks go digital, everybody in this county and everywhere and around the Bay Area is going to have to go digital, you can't talk to them. And their consortium, for here in San Jose, that's millions and millions of dollars. He's already stated that nobody would probably ever do it. The state of California doesn't have any money to do it, and it's not mandated, they're not gonna.
Okay, we've got to wrap it up here pretty quick.
Okay, so, all I'm saying is that, depending on the grant, the federal government sometimes says, quote unquote, "It has to be full P-25," some say just "P-25." So it's open for debate. If in fact, it's full P-25, then the email that I got back from Mr. Telly stating that, hey, it could be capable, was the wrong thing for him to say, and that led me to bid what I bid. Can I bid a full P-25? Absolutely. Can I be Kenwood? Absolutely. So, at the very least, you know, if we've got all these semantics going around, and people not understanding what the bid specs are and what P-25 is, maybe it ought to be, well, I'd like to get the bid award, but maybe it ought to be rebid. I don't know.
All right. Thank you very much. You are...
I'm Bill Bauer, I represent the Kenwood Factory.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll be very brief.
Say that again through the microphone, please.
I'm, my name is Bill Bauer. I'm a 15-year resident of San Bruno, and I represent the Kenwood Factory for the manufacturer of the Kenwood radios. And I'll just make two brief points after a long dialogue, a lot of this over many of our heads. I'll just simply say that if the big one hit tomorrow, the federal agencies that would assist us, would show up here talking on digital radios. They will bring their own digital infrastructure with them, and it's important, with the experience we had here in the city, where 60 homes are impacted, you can imagine the chaos. Every one of our, all of our heroes in this city were pressed to the limits addressing that. You can only imagine, in a much more scalable, large disaster, how important it will be to communicate with our federal agencies, who will be communicating on P-25 radios. Finally, that we do have radios at Kenwood that are P-25 upgradable radios, that are in the same cost category as the ones that are the gentleman who's competing with us for this contract. And should you want those analog radios that are upgradable to P-25, that don't adhere to the specs that four agencies set, we have those radios available.
Thank you very much. Okay. Discussion? Action? I'd just like to say a couple of words. I think the key for me was what Mr. Williams said a number of times, in my opinion. And I don't believe we set these specifications out to ask for opinions, we set them out to ask for a specific product that complied to certain specifications, specifications that were fairly well laid out. It's, you know, I work in a construction industry, and I deal with bids and specs all the time. And it's fine for me to try to anticipate in the future what may happen, and what I might be able to get away with, and what I might be able to save the owner, but sure as hell, I go in from the very beginning with plans and specs. Otherwise, they just throw you out. So, I think it's just a real basic question of, did you bid the specifications? No, I don't believe you did. I'll let the council speak. Any action? Michael?
One comment I would make would be that, I believe he made a valid, Mr. Williams made a valid point in that, in the email from Battalion Chief Telly, it did say that he did not want it to be digital, out of the box, which to me meant, it wasn't a hard and fast requirement. And if the digital radios are in fact digital, out of the box, then that was a little...
Misleading.
Misleading.
Okay. No else?
Yeah. No, go ahead. I was just going to say that I think it comes down to, this is about the specs. That's what this is about. And I think, Mr. Williams indicated, he does have a radio that would meet the specs, and you chose not to bid that. I'm somewhat with the mayor in that, when somebody asks for specifications, that's what should be adhered to. That's what these four agencies came together, that's what the professionals have provided, and, you know, maybe I'm just sentimental because of what happened three months ago. But when I stood there and watched it unfold, and watched those that needed everything at their disposal in action, for what they had to do and what our residents suffered, I'm not willing to take, in my opinion, I want things to be specific, I want things to be assured, and I want specifics to be met, because I want to ensure that whatever happens in the future, we are prepared.
Action?
To the Chair. I believe it's a motion to deny the appeal. Would that be appropriate?
Yes.
I make a motion to deny the appeal.
Second.
Motion second to deny the appeal, based on the information in the staff report.
Correct.
On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay.